Thank you. Please note that this is a budget. This budget will be deposited for 30 days for public comments. So if there are issues that particular councillors need to raise, or the various constituencies, or the various stakeholders, they are able to raise those issues within the 30 days and we will then be able to attend to those issues. So it must not choke you. You must pay attention for the purposes of understanding. It will be on public display. It will be on public display on our various platforms and at the district offices for the various stakeholders to look at areas that they are worried about or that need to, that would have raised concern either because they've gone high or they've gone too low. So as we read the budget, we must bear in mind that we are complying with the statutory requirements as read by the chamber secretary and we are required to do so by our budget outline. Thereafter, the budget will be discussed publicly and adjustments will be done locally at council level and even at ministry level. The ministry can recommend adjustments based on presentations made to read and such that. So let's not despair when the budget is announced.
Good afternoon to you all. Good afternoon to you all.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Your worship, I wish to start my statement by extending my genuine gratitude to the residents, resident associations, civic communities and organizations that contributed to the development of the 2026 budget for the council city of the Republic of Zimbabwe. 2025 fiscal year has been a difficult period for both the city and the residents of Arare due to significant challenges in the services delivery value chain. Significant challenges that were afflicting our communities right from limited access to clean water to deteriorating infrastructure. The willingness to engage with us reflects not just cooperation, but a deep belief in the future of our city. We recognize the value of this and will treat it with respect it deserves. The whole process of developing the 2026 financial plan was done in line with the guiding principles of the EBN Council's Act ensuring that this budget was crafted through consultation. The participation of our stakeholders was very invaluable. The feedback and honest conversation were essential insights that grounded us in the realities of our community's needs. This allowed us to develop a budget that supports financial soundness in a highly sponsored social content aimed at recovery and long-term sustainability. The strength of this process lies in extensive outreach. We had a comprehensive white level consultation meeting. We believe that the process was intensive enough and ensured that no voice was left unheard across our city. We engaged resident associations, the key stakeholders willing to betray realities and clam for improved services. We engaged the business community. These are key partners in economic resilience and job creation. We also engaged the women, persons with disabilities. These are critical stakeholders in financial planning who ensure that the needs of the most vulnerable are prioritized. The faith-based organizations providing more guidance and supporting community networks. Your worship, these consultations were the foundation of the 2026 budget development. By concentrating on the areas of greatest needs, we crafted a budget specifically aimed at addressing critical concerns such as water supply, sanitation, health, public safety, road rehabilitation and infrastructure development. We are nearing the completion of the 2021-2025 planning period, which is coinciding with the conclusion of the National Development Study One. Our vision to achieve world-class city status by 2025 has added its fair share of wins and losses. Although we have met struggles, some key challenges have hindered the full realization of our target. Looking ahead to 2030, we will be aligning our missions with the national vision. Your worship, before I introduce the theme of the City of Arare 2026 budget, allow me on behalf of the council, stakeholders and residents of Arare to express our profound gratitude to the government of the Republic of Zimbabwe for the persistent support in several transformative projects that are vital to our city's progress. We deeply appreciate the Smart Water Metering Project, a critical initiative that will significantly address Arare's water supply challenges by enhancing access to clean and safe water for thousands of residents. This project presents not only an investment in infrastructure, but a commitment to improving public health and communities' well-being. In addition, we acknowledge the contribution facilitating the trial of alternative water treatment chemicals, which will play an essential role in maintaining the quality of our water supply through deployment of chlorine dioxide project. The deployment of advanced equipment, including state-of-the-art chlorine dioxide generators and specialized quantification, blending and closing systems, will elevate the efficiency, safety and sustainability of water treatment processes. Furthermore, we want to recognize the facilitation of the construction of the state-of-the-art market in Barre. This modern market facility will stimulate local economic activity, provide safer and more organized space for traders and empower small-scale enterprises. We are genuinely thankful for the continuous partnership and support in advancing Arare's development. Your worship, the theme for this budget is "A Commitment to Inclusive Growth, Sustainable Services Delivery and Strong Fiscal Strategy." "A Commitment to Inclusive Growth, Sustainable Services Delivery and Strong Fiscal Strategy." The theme shows a commitment to improving the quality and efficiency of public services while prioritizing sustainability. The theme is rooted on the following key tenets: Financial management through implementation of a robust enterprise resource planning system. An efficient ERP is critical for the overall financial performance of the city. That is why a central, non-inimcorrigible commitment in this 2026 budget is the comprehensive implementation of a robust enterprise resource planning system. For enhancing service delivery, the 2026 budget reaffirms our commitment to advancing the quality, availability and responsiveness of municipal services. Recognizing persistent concerns from residents and stakeholders, particularly in water, sanitation, hygiene, roads, public safety, social services and environmental management. We have strategically prioritized and allocated resources to these critical sectors. Building on last year's foundation, efforts now focus on scalable and sustainable interventions that respond effectively to evolving community needs while strengthening infrastructure and administrative capacity to ensure lasting impact and improve living standards for all Arare residents. Sustainable progress. The City of Arare is firmly committed to sustainable progress for all its residents. This means expanding access to essential services in a way that respects and preserves our environment. We are investing in infrastructure projects that provide clean energy, water, sanitation and efficient waste management. We will be guided by the relevant master plan proposals in ensuring sustainability of all our operations. Your worship, in my capacity as Chairperson of Finance and Development Committee, I hereby move this motion in accordance with Section 276 of the Constitution of Zimbabwe. This provision constitutionally empowers local authorities with the authority to let the rest can take this thereby enabling council to generate sufficient revenue essential for fulfilling our mandated roles and responsibilities effectively. It is under this constitutional mandate that we proceed to ensure financial sustainability and enhance service delivery for our city. Your worship, let me draw your attention to Section 47 of the Public Finance Management Act, which requires that councils submit to the Minister of Local Government and Public Works a budget of estimated revenue and expenditure for the 2026 financial year and the related annual strategic plan for approval. Furthermore, Section 288 of the EBN Council's Act supports the constitutional provision by demanding that each year, every committee of council shall prepare detailed estimates of income and expenditure on the revenue and actual account of that committee for ensuing financial year and submit the estimates to the Finance and Development Committee. These legal provisions are critical because they guide our operations as a local authority. Your worship, this budget answers the call to action by focusing on review and measuring all results. Its program is clear on how their spending will help meet clear, time-specific goals in the areas of concern. Minimum service delivery standards launched earlier this year also guided the budget preparation. The minimum service delivery standards are the basic quality levels we must meet for our cities. Your worship, the budget is in the following programs: One, government intervention. Two, water sanitation and hygiene. Three, social services. Four, roads. Five, public safety and security. Six, natural resources and environmental protection. Your worship, I hereby present and lay the control decision of these assumptions before council.
Let's have a mover and a second. Yes, Councillor Nyakujah? Councillor Manenga?
Thank you.
Can you take, can some, two councillors take the two francs?
Your worship, according to the 2026 budget started paper issued by the Minister of Finance, Economic Development and Investment Promotion in July 2025. The global economy remains resilient with broad reporting of steady growth rate of 3.3% in 2024. In the outlook GDP growth is expected to stabilize at around 3% in 2026 before rising by 3.2% both in 2027 and 2028. This marks a modest improvement from the slower pace of 2.8% projected for 2025, suggesting that the world economy will regain some momentum after weathering recent uncertainty. The same paper notes that in Sub-Saharan Africa, growth is projected to accelerate from 3.8% in 2025 to 4.2% in 2026 before ending up to 4.5% both in 2027 and 2028. As the impact of previous weather shocks subsides and supply-side fundamentals improve, the region's outlook is supported by a rebound in agriculture and mining as well as increased investment in green energy and technology. A positive growth that is being projected is good news for Arare. Arare's performance strongly correlated with national and regional trends where it contributes about 1% of Zimbabwe's GDP and the services sector accounting for the largest share of its output. In addition, the continued growth in agriculture and mining in Sub-Saharan Africa combined with increased green energy and technology investment in the region provides favorable conditions for Arare. Any major economic developments on the continent and in Zimbabwe is good for Arare because of the growth in business utilities to disposable income and the fiscal space to honor municipal obligations for the residents of the city. On extension, your worship, following the production of this Zimbabwe gold zinc currency in April 2024, the country has experienced a large risk tempo exchange rate environment. The September 2024 zinc USD exchange rate shot from 10.56 to 25.1. The zinc has shed only 7% to date with the current rate averaging 26.8 FY. The reserve bank of Zimbabwe has maintained a tight stance on money supply levels which, coupled with some efforts from treasury, has contributed to the stability being experienced. There remains need for strict financial discipline across the economy in order to sustain the stability and promote economic growth. The use of local currency has increased since 2024 as economic agents continue to demand the currency to meet their daily statutory obligations. This has impacted the city and local authorities in general as liquidity has slightly improved as both zinc and USD flows improve. The extended stability has also diminished the risk pairs tendence to engage the black market in search of exchange gains as the premium has become too low to attract the associated risks of arrest and or being caught by illegal street-faring current operators. As one of the major recipients of the local currency, local authorities will benefit from the anticipated zinc stability. Your worship, as the year 2025 draws near closure, average monthly inflation is projected at 2.2%, while the year-on-year inflation rate is expected to average 69%. As alluded by the Minister of Finance, Economic Development and Investment Promotion, I quote, "This trajectory is anchored on the continuation of prudent fiscal and monetary policies, positive supply-side responses boosting production and exports, and a firm commitment to avoid monetization of the budget deficit."
Chief Finance, just a few seconds. I have to, I have a trip to catch or a plane to catch as I head far east to look for the investment that you are talking about so that we can augment the budgetary supplies. I thought we would start a bit earlier, but now I'm precariously about to miss my flight. On account of Councillor Nyakujah being dressed appropriately and like others, I'll ask him to come and chair the meeting in my place instead. So the lesson being that if you dress properly, you will be an acting mayor one day. So Councillor Nyakujah, please. Thank you. And as I take my leave, thank you very much.
The wishing mayor a safe journey, good night.
Okay. Your worship.
Yes.
Movement in the economic indicators, including the exchange and inflation rates, point to improve the sustainability across the economic divide. Promotion in sustainability of the preparedness that will benefit the generality of the nation including local authorities is one of the major recipients of the local currency. The projected economic growth for 2026 and the pathway to 2010 national vision requires all economic agents in the country to embrace the same, the same work ethic that puts national interests first. Your worship, the city is finalizing 2025 to 2045 master plan, which is still going through scrutiny and input from stakeholder groups. The master plan will be key to achieving the city's contribution towards the vision 2030, starting with ensuing operating year. Residents and stakeholders alike share the same vision and in the spirit of the master plan to provide an everything environment for economic sustainability. Employment creation and development of the SME sector will set out to the intended trajectory. Your worship, let me also take this opportunity to call upon our esteemed reserve bank of Zimbabwe government and team to improve communication of the de-dollarization roadmap. This will help the impact of uniting the economy towards the same agenda of economic sustainability and reduce speculative tendencies in the business environment. It will also impact on our planning as a local authority as we plan towards the vision 2030 and beyond. On the challenges, your worship, as we seek to attain the tenets of our team, a commitment to inclusive growth, sustainable service delivery and strong fiscal strategy, we need to be aligned to the following challenges: Licensing fees. Licensing fees loss. The significant regulatory changes being introduced by the central government, specifically the wide-ranging reduction and scraping of various national and local authority license fees. These measures intended to improve the ease of business, fundamentally reshape our municipal revenue landscape. Your worship, we are faced with an immediate fiscal reality which I have named the revenue shock. The move would definitely have an immediate impact on our municipal base. As a local authority, we have historically relied on business operating licenses, liquor licenses and other benefits as critical pillars of our own revenue. The projected efficiency resulting from the slashing of fees such as the liquor license application fee from 1,080 US dollars to 20 dollars in most categories and the removal of fees like the local vehicle license translates into an initial annual shortfall of approximately half a million US dollars for our non-revenue revenue per annum. The shortfall if an, an address would immediately jeopardize our core management.
And introduction of prepaid metering systems for public lighting infrastructure and traffic signals. This creates the current type fiscal space and it is a better than what the industry system in light of the name of streetlights and traffic signals in the city. Furthermore, the risk of flash and signals being discollected when the token runs out poses serious complexity in traffic management content. Engagement with the ZETDTC on the matter ongoing as we seek a sustainable solution. Your worship, the high cost of essential inputs, particularly water treatment chemicals, remains an operational threat. These chemicals are priced in USD yet the city deals for services primarily in the local currency. Your worship, the current vehicle licensing revenue allocation framework is presented to funding constraints for the city's road infrastructure program. While the existing model is facilitated nationally or nationally of road financing, the allocation is received by the City of Arare if not insufficient to meet the growing demand of road construction, maintenance and rehabilitation. Given the city's expansive road network in the high-vehicle density, there is scope for continued engagement and collaboration with NARA and other stakeholders to explore ways of enhancing the adequacy of this investment. Strengthening this partnership will be key to ensuring sustainable investment in Arare's road infrastructure and improving mobility for all residents. On law collection efficiency, despite measures in 12th payment, overall operation efficiency remains below optimal levels. This affects service delivery initiatives. The city's infrastructure, much of which is very old, requires massive investment that current resources cannot meet. On the bureaucratic programming processes, the delayed implementation of the E-Government programming system internally created programming bottlenecks resulting in limited recapitalization of service delivery operations and slowed down project implementation across program. Your worship, below is the summary of the challenges and interventions to be implemented in 2026 to address the challenges. On financial constraints, we intend to streamline, a streamlining of expenditure to critical items. On post-betrayal, we intend to continue engagement with the government to allow the city to charge demand treatment services in foreign currencies to build capacity for procurement of chemicals and other critical consumables. On inadequate road funding, we have to continue engagement with the NARA. On infrastructure decay, we have to leverage on triple piece for aggressive reinvestment. On the bureaucratic procurement systems, we have to streamline procurement processes to ensure efficiency. Your worship, let me address the critical issue of financial reporting. The city was last audited for the 2021 financial statements. The audits for the 2022, 2023 and 2024 fiscal years are currently underway and we are waiting diligently to conclude this backlog. We are optimistic that by the end of the first quarter of 2026, the city will be fully compliant and up-to-date with its statutory reporting. The delay in completing this audit is acknowledged and concerted efforts are being made to bring financial reporting fully to up, fully up-to-date. The city remains committed to addressing audit findings and strengthening internal controls. In this regard, the implementation of the ERP system, BIQ, will be instrumental in improving financial oversight and addressing recommendations raised by the auditor general. Going forward, all audit recommendations will be systematically implemented to ensure transparency, accountability and the efficient utilization of public resources. Achieving current and reliable audit accounts is more than just a compliance issue. It is the cornerstone of good governance, accountability and transparency. Many investors, whether local or international, must be able to confidently measure the financial health of the city through reliable and verified accounts. Your worship, last year we were battling with programming bottlenecks and this challenge still persists. An efficient and well-owned programming system is the central engine of service delivery. When programming is slow, our residents suffer from poor services. The investment in the government program Investment in the government program in 2026 budget is targeted. The investment in the government's program in the 2026 budget is targeted to fix the system by introducing digital transparent and swift controls and sharing every dollar is maximized, maximized for the public. Your ship, the city of Ferrari is existing in a dynamic local economy shaped by steady population growth, changes in employment patterns and fresh interest from the private sector. The 2026 budget is based in a clear understanding of these realities, aiming to balance effective sales delivery, financial stability and inclusive growth. As the urban economy grows, so does the demand for housing, transport, utilities and jobs creating both new opportunities and challenges for municipal infrastructure. Your ship, our race population is projected to surpass 2.3 million residents by 2026, up from 2022 center speakers of 1.489 million, reflecting an annual urbanization rate of approximately 2.5 percent. This growth has intensified the demand for water, wastewater management, transport and housing within formal settlements expanding on the city's periphery, especially in Guiderio, Eppway, Epple and Calijoni. Your ship, the RARE master plan 2025 to 2045 promotes compact headcount growth within service areas to limit urban sprawl, reduce infrastructure pressure and improve sales delivery efficiency. The city is also prioritizing in few hours in development, redevelopment of other utilized municipal ends and creation of mixed-use urban nodes that integrate for residential and transport function. Your ship, the daily urban mobility exceeds 800,000 commuter trips, underscoring the need for improved public transport, parking management and pedestrian infrastructure. The decentralization of administrative and service functions into five regional zones has also reshaped the urban movement and fiscal decentralization patterns. On employment levels and economic structure, your ship, employment levels remain uneven across sectors, with the former sector estimated to account for 30 to 40 percent of the working population, while the informal economy absorbs the remaining. The cities in former economy encompassing vending, small scale manufacturing, transport services and construction have become a major revenue source generating approximately 1.5 billion US dollars annually in local trade. On sectoral shifts, our economy is gradually shifting from urban industry towards services, logistics, technology and light manufacturing in line with global urban trends. The working ton, Masaasa and Greenwich side industrial clusters remain critical production nodes, but require recapitalization and infrastructure support. Despite the economic resilience, youth unemployment remains above 40 percent, with many school levers and graduates entering the informal economy. The 2026 budget therefore places emphasis on skills development, entrepreneurship support and youth-oriented infrastructure projects to promote inclusive economic participation. On surveying implications, your ship, urbanization, employment and private sector dynamics present both opportunities and fiscal pressures. To remain sustainable, the city must continue to strengthen economic planning through data-driven policy tools and GRS mapping, also align infrastructure investments with the urban growth corridors. Promote entrepreneurship and innovation ecosystems and deepen collaboration with the private sector to ensure our race transformation in a smart, resilient and inclusive capital city under the national vision. Your ship, in the absence of the traditional grants and donor funding, the city of Ferrari is evolving to embrace private sector practice and finance to improve sales delivery. The global funding economy is evolving and the city must adapt to remain effective and efficient. It is crucial that we will constantly recover by trying in this changing environment. To that end, I am excited to present a range of investment opportunities that will drive the city forward. Key sectors such as technology, renewable energy and infrastructure are poised for growth. On technology, with the advancement in digital solutions, we encourage investment in digital solutions that will complement the ERP and other parts of processing. In line with our vision, the city will use technology to improve efficiency and quality of service. Opportunities include council services, online submission and processing, city camera surveillance and interactive customer platform. On renewable energy, our commitment to sustainability to open the doors for investment in solar, wind and other renewable sources, aligning with the global trends toward green practices. The city is currently finalizing external approvals for 100 megawatts solar farm and prographa. The project is expected to contribute mainly to lowering power costs and ensuring continued power supply. Other renewable opportunities exist in the form of rooftop solar projects and utilization of the work lanes for solar farms to generate a target of 30 megawatts. Your ship, alongside these opportunities, our master plan is awaiting approval. This master plan aims to promote sustainable development and the end quality of life and create jobs for our citizens. Major initiatives include the development of smart commercial corridors, improve the public transport systems, densified housing projects, industrial parks and green spaces that foster community involvement. We are just paid to rolling out these initiatives over the next five years by way of expression of interest or any other relevant bidding processes. Your ship, to realize our ambitious goals, we are expanding our focus on public-private partnerships. Triple P's are essential in leveraging private expertise and capital for public benefit. Through triple P's, we can efficiently deliver projects while sharing risks and rewards. This collaborative approach will enable us to innovate and improve service delivery. Your ship, the following is a summary of current projects. Shawasha market, feasibility study done, awaiting submission and approval by the Zebabwe Development Agency. Barret, level market, barret phase one market constructed and operational. Phase two, TIGA, works in progress, level project preparation in progress. On waste management D O T, council resolved to include waste collection as part of the waste-to-energy agreement. Door-to-door waste collection commenced and the city has received positive reviews for area services. Full implementation is in progress. On smart water metering project, Minister of Local Government and Public Works, City of Ferrari and a private investor signed an agreement for the supply and installation of 320,000 prepaid water meters and a billing system. Re-admission of modern Jeffrey and water infrastructure valued at 342 million US dollars. The project will address challenges of the high난revenue water, low collection efficiency and low production capacity. The project commenced with capacitation of technical staff and installation of prepaid meters for a private line. The re-admission of wastewater infrastructure is planned to be done through a combination of a triple P with the Minister of Local Government and Public Works, City of Ferrari and a private investor and also through the city's internal general fund. Subject to all, subject to all relevant approvals being granted, the total investment for the triple P is estimated at 750 million US dollars. The project entails the introduction of new treatment technology that is compliant to environmental standards and also the replacement and upgrading of the wastewater pipe network. Your ship, during the period January to September 2025, the City of Ferrari recorded total receipts of 4.286 billion Z against a billing of 8.286 billion Z. The collection efficiency trend has been 48.4 percent in the first quarter, 47.5 percent in the second quarter and 54 percent in the third quarter. Although this represented an improvement compared to earlier quarters, liquidity remained tight with limited fiscal space. Improvements in the third quarter signal early success from ongoing reforms embarked on by the city's compliance checks, stringent data, follow-up, increase in electronic payment platforms and integration of the system. The main challenge is that many residents are reluctant to pay because they feel the services are not satisfactory. This creates a cycle where payment is not as a budget and less payment means there is inadequate funding to improve services. In 2026, the city must change the cycle by introducing clear service for payment initiatives and strengthening revenue collection enforcement to rebuild public trust. Liquidity problems are still making it hard to manage our working capital. For 2026, the budget includes monthly cash flow forecasting and clear cash allocation systems that prioritize the central services to keep the running smoothly. A fully integrated ERP system will help track income in real time, allowing better decisions on how to use our resources. Your ship, revenue inflows remain contemplated in a few major lines, in a few major lines, property tax, water and refuse collection, which together make up nearly 60 percent of total receipts. The limited diversification increases fiscal vulnerability of the city. Property tax base growth is affected by delays in processes of addition of new properties while water revenue is weakened by billing gaps. Non-duties income primarily from plan approvals and licenses remain a crucial source generating 900 million Z from the total receipts of 2.4286 billion Z. Your ship, the city introduced three ring fence deliveries for specific recapitalization of, for specific recapitalization of critical areas which were built starting March 2025. The levels are emerging, emerging services level, public lighting level and special water infrastructure level. But emerging services level is aimed at capitalization of fire and ambulance services. By September 30, 45.9 million Z was built with 97 million Z being collected. Three ambulances were procured from the collected funds. The public lighting level, it is aimed at renewal and expansion of the city's public lighting infrastructure. 9.3 million was built, 9.3 million Z was built with 16.9 million Z being collected. Two platforms were procured, which are critical operational assets for the public lighting section. On special water infrastructure level, aimed at building the capacity for water infrastructure renewal for the city, 77.9 million was built with 33.5 million Z being collected. Processes are currently underway to have foreign payment be facilitated by the ZEBBWE for foreign obligations. Going forward, the city must maximize this high personality, non-duties to fast-track access, platform integration and improve the customer interface. Additionally, the city must regularly clean up billing data in order to identify other assets, properties and reduce leakage. The 2026 budget plan should focus on both strong enforcement and using digital tools to make more efficient. It is best, only idea that it is better to increase the number of people paying than to put too much pressure on those who already do. Your ship, as of September 2025, the total outstanding debts owed to the City of Ferrari amount to a substantial 8.61 billion Z. The debt structure reviews that domestic consumers account for 16.44 percent. Commercial industry and industrial, 1.81 percent, dormitory towns, 4.42 percent and government entities, 2.95 percent. To contextualize this, this sum is sufficient to fully recapitalize our vehicle fleet, rehabilitate key train routes and secure water treatment chemicals for an entire year. These funds rightfully belong to our residents and their absence severely restricts our operational capabilities. The current situation is unsustainable and we need decisive intervention. Over 60 percent of these debts amounting to more than 5.2 billion originates from the domestic consumer. The commercial industrial sector collectively accounts for approximately 26 percent totaling around 2.26 billion Z. Therefore, our debt recovery strategy must be precisely targeted with an urgent focus on addressing the domestic areas to restore the city's financial stability. For 2026, the city of Oparishna is a committed alias with that strategy. Domestic net pay, the offer and the knowledge is linked to the community's use set. Commercial entity so fest, string enforcement, including this connection, can't entitle the issue of. Government alias, predominantly, send to intergovernmental offset. Your ship, as of September 25, the city owes 2.11 billion Z, up from 1.4 billion Z in January 25. Modern half of this debt, which is 50%, 50% comes from electricity news. The high electricity cost, many from power intensive water insurance system, use up a large part of the limited funds meant for running and maintaining services. The 2026 budget plan focuses on reducing energy costs by using solar power across the city. For staff leave, the city will enforce a policy to use up leave to stop extra leave from building up, which currently costs 1.54 billion Z. On top of this, the city still owes 93.5 million USD from the development and rehabilitation of municipal water and sewage treatment works for the City of Ferrari project of 2010 funded through the China Exim Bank, which adds extra pressure on finances because it must be repaid in foreign currencies, making it harder to manage daily operations. We are in the process of finalizing the payment modalities using special water leave, which was proposed for the twenty twenty five budget. Employee compensation relates to one of the city's most significant cost drivers. As of September twenty twenty five, accrued salaries totaled three point one six four billion Z. The dominance of personnel expenditure constraints allocation to capital and maintenance program. The twenty twenty six budget includes several ways to control staff costs, mainly by limiting new hires and moving staff from positions that are not on a meeting. The city will also review and adjust staff numbers in departments to focus on key services. The main goal is to lower staff costs compared to the money the city receives, following local government's limits to balance employment benefits with the city's budget health. Between January and September twenty twenty five, capital expenditure amounted to two hundred thirty five million Z, reflecting subdued investment level. Expenditure during this period was primarily directed towards the procurement of sewer pipes. What rehabilitation, the acquisition of three ambulances valued at seven point five nine million Z through the maintenance level, operational equipment and vehicles, and infrastructure works, it will fall standard. The underperformance in the capital spending is attributable to constraint in liquidity, program in botonics, and the prioritization of unavoidable recurring obligations such as water treatment chemicals, staff salaries, and fuel costs. Consequently, critical infrastructure renewal, particularly in water and wastewater treatment, is more as good rehabilitation, as significantly led by the issue. Going forward, the city intends to prioritize capital expenditure within the first two quarters of twenty twenty six, with a strategic focus on quick wins. Quick win project that will positively influence customer perception and improve collection rates. Key initiatives include the replacement of water network pipes, installation of water meters, refurbishment of sewer networks, and procurement of heavy machinery. To enhance oversight and ensure efficient fund utilization, a performance monitoring dashboard will be introduced to track project milestones in real time. Furthermore, public private partnerships within the water sanitation and hygiene wash sector will be actively ensued to bridge funding gaps and secure tangible advancement in service delivery during the first half of the fiscal year. The devolution of funds play a key part of the government of Zimbabwe's commitment to decentralizing fiscal resources, as outlined in section three hundred and one of the constitution, which ensures fair distribution of national funds to local government. However, as of September thirty twenty twenty five, the city of Ferrari is yet to receive its allocation for the year. Despite this delay, the city continues to prioritize devolution goals within its overall plans for capital projects and service delivery, hopeful that the funds will be released before the financial year end. The water will slow down important infrastructure, especially in the water sector, where funds were made for rehabilitating water treatment facilities and upgrading sewer line. Still, the city is prepared to move forward immediately once the funds become available. While the twenty twenty five transfers are still pending, the city is guided by the approved budget, which focused on vital infrastructure and social services. The wash received at the allocation seven point six million, hereafter for water treatment rehabilitation in Forex, on roads, one point five million USD, reselling of major roads, drainage way, drainage network upgrade, and maintenance. And social services, three point seven million USD, construction of a primary school, and a clinic upgrade. Total initiative, four point eight million. The failure to release the allocated devolution fund has significantly impacted the city's progress. Many important infrastructure projects, which had already been approved, are now put on hold because they are waiting for funding to move forward. During the twenty twenty five year, the year twenty twenty five, the Zimbabwe National Road Administration, NARA, continued to provide critical support towards the maintenance and rehabilitation of the city of Ferrari's road network. The city has a designated road authority, received total expense amounting to eighty five point two million Z as of twenty October twenty twenty five. Of this amount, twenty four point four nine six million was allocated towards routine maintenance. Sixty point seven million Z was earmarked for periodic maintenance with the reconstruction of the, the R C P and W bank road. In addition to those financial allocations, NARA Fed has supported the city's operations through the provision of hundred and ten thousand liters of diesel fuel, valued at approximately hundred and seventy seven thousand US dollars during the first three quarters of the year. This fuel allocation greatly assisted in sustaining on the ground maintenance activities and ensuring continuity of safety delivery. Furthermore, the Ministry of Transport for Infrastructure Development through the emerging road rehabilitation program E R R P two, has completed, has complemented the city's efforts by undertaking major rehabilitation works on major roads within the capital. This coordinated approach between NARA, the Ministry of Transport for Infrastructure Development, and the city of Ferrari have gone a long way in improving condition of key roads within the capital, enhancing connectivity and facilitating economic and social activities. On our strategic business unit, Yorshi, city parking private limited revenue collection from parking fees has shown significant growth towards targets. This is a testament to the efficiency of operations and the dedication of staff. In line with the mandate, City Parking Private Limited, limited thirty percent of parking fees collection to the shareholder, amounting to one point seven three nine million US dollars and twenty three point one nine million Z for the period January to August twenty twenty five. The entity also emitted sixty percent of the enforcement fees collection, amounting to four point zero three six million Z and zero point four one one million US dollars for the periods January to October twenty twenty five. This remittance is demonstrated commitment to supporting the city's revenue. City Parking Private Limited is taking several important steps to improve parking services and support our community. There are plans to expand parking zones into growing commercial areas, increasing convenience and boosting revenue by using advanced technology, including surveillance vehicles, the entity has enhanced compliance and reduced revenue losses. Yorshi, we are proud that our strategic business unit has achieved ISO certification, reflecting commitment to quality and customer satisfaction. In addition, City Parking Private Limited will continue offering exemptions to the elderly and war veterans as part of our social responsibilities. Finally, there are plans set to develop the barbers terminus and key transport app to improve infrastructure and passenger experience. On Faro Marketing, Yorshi, Faro Marketing Private Limited continues to navigate the effectiveness of their operation and has made significant strides in delivering value to the shareholders and stakeholders. The entity relit eighty percent, twenty percent cash, and sixty percent ring fence for social infrastructure. To date, Faro Marketing has remitted a total of fifty three thousand US dollars and two hundred and forty thousand Z, and contributed, that is twenty percent, and contributed USD one hundred and sixty thousand and seven hundred and twenty eight thousand Z towards Faro Stadium rehabilitation work. On Faro Stadium, the development of Faro Stadium remains a key priority for Faro Marketing Private Limited. The stadium, the stadium is potential to be a major revenue generating asset for the city and ensuring that it is developed to its full potential. The plans for the stadium include upgrading the facilities, increasing seating capacity, and hosting major events that will attract visitors and revenue to the city. Yorshi, as you present, the twenty twenty six city of Ferrari budget, it is important to underscore the principle that guides our planning. Inclusive service delivery is both a social and economic imperative. We acknowledge that women, youth, and vulnerable groups have long owned the brand in, of inadequate municipal services, especially in critical areas such as water access, sanitation, waste management, and public safety. In response, this budget intentionally integrates gender responses and social inclusion objectives across both operational group and capital allocation. Our commitment is clear, no arts, no community, and no demographic, as we steer a rising power and growth. This is not merely compliance with national bodies of freedoms, such as the gender, the Zimbabwe national gender bodies, the National Development Study One, all of which emphasize equitable participation in economic and civic life, but a deliberate commitment to address gender equity is a catalyst for sustainable and transformative. We firmly believe that fostering inclusive growth and equality will create a stronger, more resilient drive, empowered to meet the challenges of today and seize the opportunities for more. Allocation targeting women, youth, and vulnerable groups. On water sanitation and hygiene wash, thirty percent of, thirty percent of wash rehabilitation fund are for projects that directly is the domestic water bidding on women and girls, such as boosting of water provision in Mapo, an area which is perennially suffering from inadequate water supply through rehabilitation of the Dumbo Park Station. Funds are allocated to contract public ambitious blocks with ramps for social inclusion of persons with disabilities. Waste recycling clusters in Barren, Lenvu, and Mapo will prioritize youth cooperatives turning waste into income. Clinic upgrades to maintain the facilities in areas of safe provision gaps like Marlborough, Tariru, and Lujevo. Market modernization, that is, Pezzaramo, Lenora, Kua Zan, will incorporate safe trading zones with storage and lighting for female traders. The city has a disability inclusion policy and deliberate efforts will be made to allocate significant trading spaces to persons with disabilities and to outdoor share. The city intends to establish three drug and substance rehabilitation centers, halfway home, or direct with rehabilitation center, and the Matarpey rehabilitation center. City also intends to expansion of public lighting in water sports, improves women's safety during the night. High mast towers will be installed progressively in different wards of the city, at least Mapogo, Lenvu, Lenora, and Budiriro among others. To institutionalize inclusively, every program in the twenty twenty six budget carries gender and social inclusion markers. Government, government administration, gender balanced the representation in budget consultation in what development for, on roads, we designed, road design of pedestrian infrastructure with the safety rails, lighting, and ramps for the physical challenge. On housing, transparent housing allocation, accommodating female-headed household. On environment of conservation, women and youth groups to lead community tree planting and wetland protection initiatives under the Green and Blue campaign. Expected results for twenty twenty six. Yorshi, we expect ten percent improved access to water provision from three hundred megaliters to five hundred and sixty megaliters. One thousand youths trained and employed through municipal projects. Ten percent of all small business space allocation reserved for vulnerable groups. Reduction in reported safety incidents in previously elite markets in Barstamina. Demonstrable, demonstrable improvements in gender segregated access to essential services. The city commits to allocate at least five percent of its capital and recurrent budget to gender and inclusion specific initiatives, tracked through program based budgeting line. This align, this aligns municipal action with the national S T G number five for gender equality and S T G eleven, sustainable cities and communities, ensuring Ferrari's development path is inclusive, safe, and fit. Yorshi, the twenty twenty six financial plan for the city of Ferrari is built on two strategic pillars, that is enhanced revenue mobilization and accelerated capital investment. And enhanced revenue mobilization and fiscal discipline, ensuring predictable cash flows to sustain safety delivery, and on accelerated capital investment, anchored on infrastructure renewal, digital modernization, and community resilience. The consolidated estimates present a total resource envelope of six hundred and ninety point eight million USD, of which approximately two hundred and thirty four point eight million USD, which is thirty four percent is directed towards capital expenditure programs, while four hundred and fifty five point three million to sixty six percent support recurring operations and service maintenance. Yorshi, projected total revenue for twenty twenty six amounts to six hundred and ninety point eight million USD, reflecting a ninety percent nominal growth from the twenty twenty five outset. Growth is driven by projected improved billing efficiency under the new E R P. Property base increase due to inclusion of new properties, which has not been captured over the years due to botonics in surveying, regularization of properties, moderate tariff adjustments, and strong enforcement measures across key revenue streams. Yorshi, internally generated revenues amount to five hundred and fifty six point nine million US dollars, segregated even if following income stream. Refugees collection, thirty four point six, six seven million USD. Wastewater, forty point two seven six million USD. Property tax, two hundred and eleven point seven seven four USD. Symmetries, one point seven million USD. Water services, one hundred and twenty three, five one two four hundred. Business license, six point one four one, seven hundred. Municipal police services, two million. Housing, thirteen point one four million USD. City parking, four point six eight million USD. Estates, twenty three point one eight nine million USD. Welfare, five point eight six million USD. Building inspectorate, one point eight one zero million USD. Merchant services, two point nine three zero million USD. And domain fees, four point five million USD. Education fees, two point eight two seven million USD. Hospital and clinic fees, four point four four nine million USD. Rent fees, three point zero nine eight million USD. Town planning, two point one five zero million USD. S M S, four point two six six million USD. And others, two point eight seven two million USD. And others, two point eight, seven, two million USD. Key revenue enhancement measures for twenty twenty six. Digital billing and E R P. Full deployment of ERP for real-time billing of water, refuse, property takes, and licenses. Tariff rationalization, that is the implementation of cost-effective yet socially sensitive tariffs across utilities. Data recovery drive, enforcement of payment plans, and automation of reminders to substantively reduce barriers by twenty five percent. Licensing compliance audits targeting informal and small enterprise segments for inclusion in the revenue net. Investment in triple B promotion, attracting private participation in water, wastewater, SMEs development, and solar project. Asset optimization, sweating off council assets to get maximum benefit. These measures are expected to stabilize monthly cash inflows and gradually improve the city's liquidity position, enabling predictable displacement to service departments. On capital expenditure priorities, we have got service delivery. Capital investment in twenty twenty six totals, two hundred thirty four million US dollars, with focus on asset renewal and service delivery expansion. On wash, one hundred twenty seven point four million US dollars is earmarked for refurbishment of modern Jefri and Prince Edward plants, replacement of critical water, insurance, procurement installation, and prepared water meters. And the rehabilitation of wastewater on Vales Network, including Amalinda Spring Cross. On roads, thirty point one million USD is earmarked for overlay in the region of two hundred kilometers north. Lenvu and Budiriro drainage upgrade, smart traffic signals for ten intersections. On social services, forty three point two million US dollars earmarked for clinic rehabilitation and such as market stores and recreation centers, and such as drug and substance rehabilitation centers. On government administration, one point four million USD is earmarked for the ERP rollout, civic center upgrades, fleet recapitalization for financing audit teams and building maintenance. On public safety and security, four point one million USD is earmarked for fighting that the dampens, and amplifies CCTV systems and street lighting. On natural resources conservation management, zero point five million USD is earmarked for wetland rehabilitation, tree planting, and climate resilient projects. The twenty twenty six budget introduces a strategy, infrastructure modernization agenda, centered on technology, sustainability, and resilience. A full ERP integration for finance, HR billing, procurement, and asset management. Smart metering for high consumption clients, first one, one hundred thousand connections. Data-driven performance dashboard accessible to management in council. On operational assets, acquisition of frankenluders, to benders, ten chip tracks, fastback lotteries, ten flatbeds, tour of the tracks, and two excavators, and wine reclaimers, motorized rotor bousers, asphalt plant, asphalt mixing plant, which may distribute, road marketing machine, a man, other, other tourist service capacity. Installation of fleet tracking system. On energy efficiency and green transition, solar street lighting, twenty two meters priority corridors, rooftop solar on municipal clinics and district offices to reduce grid dependence. On smart water meter, on smart water management, non-revenue water monitoring through digital pressure zones, real-time water quality sensors, and treatment plants. On urban resilience and climate adaptation. Stormwater, master plan implementation and green infrastructure expansion, community early warning systems for flood-prone areas. On triple Bs and innovation financing, we have got structured triple Bs pipeline for water, wastewater, and SMEs development. Also use of devolution funds and loan funding for capital leveraging. On expected outcomes for twenty twenty six. On capital delivery, more than fifty percent execution rates on infrastructure projects hosted by triple Bs, devolutions, and loans. We also expect limited stability, predictable monthly cash flows, and enhanced credit to workers. And service improvement, reliable water supply, clean streets, safer roads, and responsive public health facilities. On institutional efficiency, automated maintenance, audit, transparent, and reduced leakages. Yojin, the twenty twenty six revenue capital estimates present a financially realistic yet transformative project. The balanced cost recovery with affordability, channel resources to infrastructure renewal, and embedded digital transformation across service departments. Through disciplined implementation, Sido Farare will reinforce public confidence and move closer to, to our vision. As creation of a more sustainable and inclusive city, capital city. On key tariffs, residential and commercial water charges. Introduction of prepaid smart water meters. Yojin, twenty years billing efficiency and promote responsible water usage. Sido Farare will roll out prepaid smart water meters across residential and commercial industrial properties through a public-private partnership arrangement. Initiative is part of the twenty twenty six, twenty three wash modernization strategy aligned with the vision twenty thirty in the city's commitment to financial sustainability, transparency, and improve the customer assets. Consequently, Yojin, this initiative comes with a heavy investment, which translates to increased tariffs as presented below. Water consumption will be charged on a pay-as-you-use basis. Allowing households to monitor usage in real time and avoid estimated billing. This model ensures predictable revenue streams for the city while promoting equity, conservation, and transparency. Yojin, the twenty twenty six water tariff review aims to align rates with the cost recovery while maintaining affordability for low consumption households. Residential lifeline beds of zero to five cubic meters remains moderately subsidized to protect vulnerable households. While consumption above twenty cubic meters in case incremental costs recover. Example ranges, two cubic meters domestic progressively rising by use event. Commercial and industrial, indirect supply cost, and energy input, ensuring industrial users contribute proportionately. On water charge residential. Residential identity, that is zero to five cubic meters, existing is one dollar twenty four. Yojin, I propose two dollars. On residential identity, zero to five cubic meters, there is, there existing is one dollar seventy. In the prospect of two dollars, and you propose four dollars nine. On water commercial, zero to hundred cubic meters, existing, two hundred fifty dollars, we are proposing fifty dollars. On zero to two hundred cubic meters, existing is seventy five, being meant to be seventy five dollars. Two hundred to five hundred cubic meters, one fifty, and propose one fifty. On water commercial consumption, about from zero to hundred, we propose six dollars. About one hundred cubic meters, we propose four dollars. On sewer, sewer charges, sewage tariffs have been adjusted to cover pumping, treatment, and maintenance cost in program and fuel waste. Residential fixed monthly charge of nine dollars and thirteen dollars expected before high enlargizing property. Commercial and industrial charge based the number of fitment installed on a property. On sewer charges, residential identity, nine dollars, residential law, density, thirteen dollars, commercial fitment, seventeen dollars twenty cents. On reference collection, Yojin, reference collection remains a key pillar of visible service and public health protection. Domestic, that is high to low density, nine dollars for identity and thirteen dollars for load density scaled by property class. On commercial, aligned with waste volume and frequency of collection. In line with the government of Zimbabwe's directive for municipalities to rationalize and reduce business license fees, Sido Farare is recalculated in twenty twenty six time framework to support investment growth, enterprise formalization, and economic recovery. This proposed budget tariff structure seeks to make Arari a competitive, inclusive, and business-friendly city while maintaining adequate fiscal capacity to sustain service delivery. The city has adopted a tiered reduction mode balancing compliance with the national directive and its own fiscal sustainability. This model recognizes Arari's strategic role as the national capital and commercial hub, where affordable licensing is essential to attract investment, create jobs, and formalize small to medium enterprises. Yojin, it is however important to note that the twenty twenty five and prior licensing regime was crucial for the city to subsidize the provision of public health services to make them affordable to all. The city has reconfigured other sources to keep health services within reach for all. The key business license fee structure. Shop license, that is below fifty square meters, existing charges four hundred. We propose two hundred dollars in twenty twenty six, is fifty percent reduction. And shop license, fifty square meters, two hundred square meters, existing is six hundred US dollars. We are proposing three hundred US dollars, which is also a fifty percent reduction. And shop license is above hundred square meters, we propose, existing data, we are proposing five hundred dollars, which is a thirty percent reduction. A dress as classy shop from four hundred and sixty, we are reducing to two hundred and thirty. A dress as classy shop from three hundred forty five to one hundred seventy three. For workers, nine food items, which was done, which is currently a hundred and fifteen, we are proposing fifty eight dollars, which is a fifty percent reduction. For workers, food from one hundred and fifteen to fifty eight dollars, which is also a fifty percent reduction. This encourages full service compliance through affordable licensing. The twenty twenty six tariffs are structured to support full cost recovery for essential utilities without compromising affordability. To also anchor environmental sustainability, encouraging water conservation, recycling, and waste minimization. To also advance digital transformation by implementing e-billing, e-licensing, and integrated receipting to enhance transparency and ease for payment. The full tariff schedule will be available for inspection during public deposit period. Yojin, the twenty twenty six projected expenditure by program. Yojin, twenty twenty six Sido Farare estimate represents a total consolidated expenditure envelope of approximately six hundred ninety point one, nine, two million, translating to a growth of ninety percent over the twenty, the twenty twenty five approved budget. This expansion accommodates inflationary pressures and deliberate front loading of capital expenditure to restore reliability in water, waste management, roads, and merchant services. Expenditure distribution follows the program-based budgeting framework, which aligns city functions to service delivery outcomes and outputs. The six core programs are government administration, wash, social services, road, public safety and security services, natural resources, conservation and management. Together they body the twenty twenty six budget theme, a commitment to inclusive growth, sustainable process delivery, and strong fiscal structure. The aggregated allocation, government administration is a total of one hundred four point four, six million, which is fifteen point four percent of the total budget. This covers, this focuses on financial management, police coordination, ICT modernization, and corporate services. On wash, an allocation of two hundred ninety seven point zero, one million US dollars, which is forty three point zero, three percent of the, of the total budget. This is focusing on water production, sewer rehabilitation, solid waste management. On social services, one hundred twenty three points, nine seven million USD, which is seventeen point nine six percent. Focus is on health, education, housing, markets, and recreation. On roads, one hundred eighty point nine five million US dollars, which is also seventeen point two three percent of the total budget. Which focus is on road, rehabilitation, and traffic management. Public safety and security services, forty two point six, two million, which is six point one eight percent. Focusing on municipal policing, merchant services, and public lighting. On natural resources and conservation and management, one point six, eight million US dollars, which is zero point two four percent, which focuses on weapon protection and climate resilience. To give us a total of six hundred nine point one nine million US dollars. Yojin, capital expenditure represents thirty four percent of the total budget. Reflecting a deliberate shift from the twenty twenty five budget recurring to asset ratio of twenty five percent. Creating capital outlets hosted by triple Bs financing in the water sector, while recurring operations including salaries, fuel, power, and repairs, and maintenance account for sixty six percent of the total budget. On government, Yojin, this program undertakes city operations by providing strategic leadership, management, ICT systems, and human resources administration. Its twenty twenty six allocation of one hundred five point nine seven million USD aims to strengthen institutional performance and compliance. Major cost drivers are employee costs, forty two point seven million. ICT modernization and ERP rollouts, four point nine five million. Repairs and maintenance of buildings, five point five, six million US dollars. Audit and government functions, three point eight million US dollars. On twenty twenty six priorities, ERP deployment, full migration to a robust ERP covering all core modules. Fiscal discipline prioritizing. Fiscal discipline prioritizing expenditure towards service delivery, adhering to expenditure limits and cash flow. Human capital development, capacity building in IPSAS, and public finance management act compliance for all key employees. ICT and cybersecurity, city data center backup, and security networking for district offices. Expected outcome in twenty twenty six, improved audit opinion, automated financial reporting, wage-to-revenue ratio within the statutory provision. On WASH, Yorshi. At two hundred ninety seven point zero one million USD. WASH remains the city's largest program, underscoring water security and sanitation as core capacity health obligation. The water supply programs are water services. An allocation of one hundred ninety nine point eight three million USD, which is seventy percent. Waste water services, fifty eight point six four million. Waste water services, fifty eight point six four million USD, which is twenty percent. On solid waste management, thirty point five four million USD. Which is thirty percent. The key investments in twenty twenty six are installation of smart water meters, about hundred thousand. Pump rate refurbishment, and chemical procurement to ensure twenty four hour operation at modern Jefri and Princess Edward. Tram main replacement, that's a rehabilitation of edge domains in Greenfield, Mapuku, and Ifflu. Rehabilitation of wastewater conveyance network, including Amalinda street crossing. Cobra and field upgrades, biofilter restoration, and slide entry unit. Solid waste, construction of material recovery centers. Performance targets guided by the minimum safety delivered standards, affordable water production up to five hundred and twenty megawatt hours a day, from three hundred and fifty megawatt hours a day in twenty twenty five. Sixty percent reduction in sewer blockages. Refuge collection coverage of hundred percent. And the non-revenue water reduction to thirty percent in line with the minimum service delivered standards. Yorshi, the program directly advances STG number six on clean water and sanitation in STG level sustainable cities. On social services program, the total allocation of one hundred twenty three point nine five million USD, which is seventy point nine six percent. With funds here, housing, education, markets, recreation, and social protection. Health services have an allocation of fifty two point three eight million USD, which contributes forty two percent. Housing in estates, eighteen point seven nine million USD, which is eleven percent. Education facilities, seven point two six million USD, which is six percent. Parks and symmetries, ten point five nine million USD, which is eight percent. Markets and SMEs development, twenty seven point nine million USD, which is twenty two percent. And then welfare, ever taken in one eight million USD, which is eleven percent of the allocation, social services allocation. Major project in twenty twenty six under social services allocation, clinic rehabilitation, upgrading of fifteen clinics with solar setup. On maternal health, upgrading of Njekotaro and Omawu into maternity centers. Specialist service, establishment of working infectious disease hospital diagnostic center, and working state. On market modernization, upgraded in Pernanamo, Quadac, Landview, and Parisia so lighting and sanitation. And housing, housing of in few, in the title, is large issue, for five thousand units. And utility gender programs, one thousand units trade, other events use, and recycling initiative. And expected outcome, output, patients attendance, up by fifteen percent, and our youth facilities, that's our target. One thousand market stores, we are treated in allocated with twenty five percent reserved for women and persons with disabilities. Twenty hectares of new green space restored. On road program, Yorshi. A USD one hundred six point four five million USD. Co-funded by Zinara in council and revenue. Program emphasizes, emphasizes, preventive maintenance, and traffic efficiency. And the total allocation, Yorshi, lot management, city administration, gives seventy nine point five one million USD, which is seventy five percent of the allocation. Drainage, stormwater management, nine point four three million USD, which is nine percent. Traffic management and planning, seventeen point five one million USD, which is sixteen percent. The projects earmarked are overlays or issues, thirty five kilometer arterial in district roads. Creative maintenance across the city. Drainage upgrades, land view H good deal, and by equipment. Upgrade of existing. Signalized junctions to solar LED, LED and poles. On bus terminal, upgrading of resident bus terminals. On digital systems, installation of CCTV and intersection and traffic management system. On road markings and signage, rehabilitation of critical corridors, Zamora Marceau, Seguro, and Ontario. Yorshi, on public safety and security program, an allocation of forty two point six two million USD. Supporting fire, ambulance, municipal policing, and public lighting. Of the forty two point six two million allocation, Yorshi, the merchant services gave twelve point eight seven million USD, which is thirty percent. Municipal police, twenty two point two seven million USD, which is fifty two percent. Public lighting, seven point four eight million, which is eighteen percent. Our focus is on refurbishment of three fire stations and procurement of two fire attenders. Procurement of ten ambulances and a fleet dispatch system. CCTV, external dungeons, and public lighting in dry water pool, Landview, Barri, Quadac. Gender-based development, awareness campaigns in markets, and regs. The end result, the outcomes are fire response time, five minutes per five kilometer radius. Improve the public order in compliance through ERP reading, the licensing enforcement.